Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's so nice to see you all. Thank you so much for being here with us in person. It has been a long time since we've seen some of you in person and we are thrilled to have you with us. It's Thursday, October 7th. It's my pleasure to make a motion to go back into public session if I could have a second. Thank you, Elana. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. But everybody, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. This is an eagerly anticipated meeting and we thank you for your patience. I'm sorry, we were starting a few minutes late. We are so looking forward to hearing from our building principals about the opening of our schools and welcoming students back to school in person five days a week. I think we have just a few short items of business before we turn our attention to the presentation. I think I will suggest that we postpone our board committee reports to the end of the meeting. But if we could, please invite our student board member. Welcome back. It's wonderful to see you, Abigail. And we're ready for your report if you are.
Over the first few weeks of school, students are enjoying being back in the classroom full-time. Even after the past year of half-online and hybrid learning, students are adjusting very well. Kindergarteners, sixth graders, ninth graders are all experiencing a smooth transition into their new schools. In Campus Congress, we had our first meeting on Wednesday, September 29, and the Campus Congress Executive Board, including myself, introduced ourselves and shared a few goals we have for this school year. Our main goal is to encourage members to share as many proposals as possible so we can really make change this school year. At the meeting, we had three new proposals, our first being a winter pep rally for athletes who play a winter sport. Second of all, we proposed students to do the morning announcements and announce JV and varsity sports games as a way to add more school spirit, and this proposal has been approved. And we had our first student announcements this past Monday. Our third proposal was changing the first bell in the morning from trumpets as many students felt this was not the best way to start their morning. So that has also gone into motion and now we have different bells in the morning. We also brainstormed ideas for committees covering topics such as sustainability and school events. In the high school, on Wednesday, September 22, a virtual campus night was held where parents could watch videos from their students' teachers. The week of September 20th was Spirit Week for the high school and some themes included USA Day, Western Day, and School Spirit Day. The pep rally was held the following Friday where varsity sports introduced themselves and there was a performance by dance team. Saturday, September 25th, was the homecoming football against Yorktown and we won. On September 23rd, Jose Antonio Vargas, author of Dear America, which was the community read this year, held a webinar that all students watched in their ninth-period classes. Students could ask Mr. Vargas any questions about him and his writing, which was a very unique and exciting experience. Lastly, on September 27th, groups of 11th and 12th grade leaders and the freshman class participated in an all-day retreat. The groups participated in activities to get to know each other better. We also spoke about high school life to help them with any questions they may have coming into a new school. In the middle school, the annual book fair was held from September 27th to the 30th. And on September 29th, curriculum night was held for sixth graders. And on September 30th, seventh and eighth graders had their curriculum night. The middle school also had a Spirit Week the week of September 20th with themes such as sports teams and School Spirit Day. Eighth-grade home-based leaders also got together outside in the first week of school. In Meadow Pond Elementary School, there was a welcome-back picnic held on September 17th. School Picture Day was on September 28th and today was Harvest Day and Soup Day will follow tomorrow. At Increase Miller Elementary School, there was a welcome-back picnic on September 10th and School Picture Day was held on September 23rd. At Katona Elementary School, the welcome-back picnic was held on September 17th. The fifth-grade car wash was held on the 18th and School Picture Day was on the 27th. In all elementary schools, curriculum night was for grades kindergarten to second grade on September 21st and grades three through five on September 27th.
Thank you. That was fantastic. We so appreciate your enthusiasm, your comprehensiveness, and the opportunity to just hear in your voice the joy and the exuberance for all that's going on at the beginning of school and we really thank you for that. We needed it. That was terrific.
And the efficiency. They got all this stuff done. We're still...
Amazing. Amazing. People must have had a lot of bottled up energy. We can all go home.
I think Abigail has successfully shortened some of our principals' periods. They're happy about that, too.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. Did anybody have any questions or comments before we go on? Terrific. Thank you so much. It was great. That brings us to board announcements, if there are any. I'll pause.
Do you follow that?
Well said. And then perhaps we'll turn our attention to you, Andrew.
I'm happy to postpone also if we want to just go right to the presentation.
Okay, terrific. Yes, please, let's do that. So we are ready to turn our attention to our visitors, our principals. Welcome. Nope, I'm so sorry. Our external audit, pardon me. I completely forgot. Welcome to the auditors. I totally forgot. Yeah, we're gonna be here a while. Thank you.
Danell, did you want to introduce our guests?
Yes, just so before we start, tonight, we have both our external and internal auditors presenting. Bonadillo Group will be our first presenters and they will give an overview of our fiscal year-end findings. And then Acum Audit will be the next presenters and they will present their budgeting, financial accounting, and reporting audit. Before I turn it over to Tim Doyle and Adam, I'm gonna...
Cozelli.
I just want to thank everybody who was involved in the audit. By way of background, the external audit begins in April and May where they meet with the audit committee. They do some field work in May and then they come back for some intense work in August that primarily falls on the business office staff. So I'd like to thank my team members, Lisa Hurley, Kim Parks, the district treasurer, Margaret Taylor, payroll and benefits coordinator, Karen Carroll, the purchasing agent, and Chris Todd and accounts payable. Also, the internal audit takes place as well. We, the audit committee, met with them in April or May as well. They also met with key personnel, principals, and directors. Afterwards, Acum presented their findings to the audit committee and it was decided to determine budgeting, financial accounting, and an assessment would be the area of focus. Once again, Acum returned for some in-depth work in late August and the business team, I'm, my gratitude for that work as well. Once in draft form, both audits went before the audit committee. The audit committee is comprised of board trustees, Julia, Bill, and Elana. And then we also have community members, Joseph Garafolo, Danielle Imacelli, Michael Looper, Michelle Mew, Ivana Bahal, and David Proskin. The members of the committee reviewed both audit reports on September 29th. And with that, I will turn it over to Tim and Adam.
Thank you, Danell. Thank you and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I do want to echo two comments that have been made so far. First of all, it is great to be back live. We love being in front of you and seeing all your faces. So thank you. Thank you for inviting us this evening. Additionally, I want to just echo, your team did a great job. It was very challenging. I mentioned to them, as well as some other audit committees, it is, has been the most challenging year in terms of audits for our school districts for many reasons. One of which we'll talk a little bit about, you did implement a new standard. It took a lot of work on your crew's behalf as well as ours. So we appreciate all the efforts. So thank you.
Thank you.
You should have three audit reports with you and also a required communication letter. The required communication letter is required on all audits, or all financial statement audits, I should say. And it requires us to put certain things in writing. And some of the things that, and I won't go through the entire letter, but I will highlight some things. First of all, we're required to note whether there were any difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We're happy to say that there were not. While it was a challenging audit, certainly no difficulties, nothing that we didn't expect. We're also required to note if we had any disagreements with management as to accounting matters, reporting matters, or auditing matters. Again, we're happy to note that there were no such items. And then the other thing I would just highlight from the letter, it does talk about you implementing the new standard of GASB 84, which related to fiduciary reporting. And we worked with your management, as well as your audit committee, sort of talked them through certain items that had previously been reported as fiduciary had to move to other funds. Okay? And I'll highlight, there's a footnote that talks about that, that I'll just point your attention to when we get to. I'll take you through the basic financial statement audit and then Adam's gonna take us through the the single audit and the extra classroom audits. So in a summary fashion, we'll go over the results of our audit, certainly open any questions. And as mentioned, we did meet with the audit committee and went through pretty thoroughly. So from the order of the basic financial statements, there are two auditors' reports in that packet. The first one that is, I believe pages one through three, is our auditor opinion. That's the opinion on your financial statements, which includes both the statements and the footnotes. And we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance an auditor can give you. It means that we were able to obtain sufficient audit evidence to support both the statements and the underlying footnotes. It's consistent with what you've received in past years, so no change there. But that is, again, the highest level of assurance you can get. The second report in that packet is the governmental auditing standards report and that requires us to report on two things. First is your internal controls over financial reporting. So those are the controls that if not in place or not operating effectively would not allow you in a timely fashion to detect or correct a material error or fraud. We noted no issues there, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Again, very consistent with what you've had in the past. And the second part of that report is your compliance with laws, regulations, and grant contracts that could have a material effect on your state. We noted no such matters, no non-compliance. Again, very consistent with what you've had in the past. In terms of the report, those are the auditor's reports, very clean. The one thing I did want to note is you do have a footnote on, it's footnote number 13, that is the change in accounting principle. And so as mentioned, this shows you, this footnote shows you what the balances were in each of the funds the prior year and what had to be adjusted in order for you to start out the year under the new standard. So that's something we did go over with the audit committee. I just wanted to point you in that direction because it is a pretty significant change for you and all the other school districts this year. Any questions on the basic financial statement? All right, I'll let Adam take over for the other two.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for having me, for having us. So the next area is the extra classroom financial statement. So the state requires you to have separate financial statements and audit report related to the extra classroom activities, which is like the student clubs and activities. This report is required to be presented on a cash basis. Our independent auditor's opinion on the extra classroom activities was qualified. And we generally have qualified opinions for extra classroom activities just based on the nature of the activities and not being able to verify the completeness of the cash being received at the student level. So it's in line with, you know, almost all school districts as well as past results here. Do you have any questions on the extra classroom activity report?
I just have a quick question. It's an obvious question. Is there anything we should be doing to give you more visibility into the extra classroom financials? Or is this commonplace throughout?
It's commonplace, almost 100% across the board. It's just the nature of the activities. The students are receiving the cash. There's not really any control at that level to make sure all that cash is getting transferred on to the, you know, to the books.
And it's relatively immaterial, I presume, and you're comfortable that that's relatively uncontrolled?
Yes.
Can I, can I just add some color to that? So like if students have a bake sale, they don't have like a starting inventory of, we have 100 sets of cookies, we're gonna sell them for 50 cents each. And then at the end, so like if it was to meet the standard, they would sort of have to do that. And then at the end say, oh, we have 20 left, so we sold 80, so we should have $40. And they would have that written up. All of our student treasurers go through training, so they do receive training on how to keep financial records so to keep track of how much money came in and what their expenses are. So that piece of it is, like, we do that very well. It's more that the collection of cash and the reconciliation with the cash in terms of what was sold is just, it's not really feasible.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. So if there's no other questions, more questions there, I'll move on to the next area. Okay, so the next area is the Uniform Guidance Audit of Federal Awards. So a uniform guidance audit is generally required when the school district would expend over $750,000 in federal aid during the course of the fiscal year. This school district spent, expended about $1.4 million for the fiscal year, so there was a requirement for an audit this year. This district does qualify as a low-risk auditee just based on favorable audits in the past and no real issues in the past. The program that we audited this year was a child nutrition cluster. And based on our audit, we noted no material weaknesses with regards to the compliance requirements of the program. And we noted no significant deficiencies either. So we did issue an unmodified opinion, again, which Tim mentioned is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. Are there any questions on the single audit report?
No. Thank you.
That concludes our report. I don't know if there are any other questions from the board, otherwise that's the end of our report.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you being with us and taking the time to be with us physically in person. Thank you. It's great to see you and to have you. And thank you to the audit committee for your deliberations on the 29th, which made our job very easy tonight. I think we're in great shape. Thank you. Congratulations on a great audit. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And so next up, we have from Acum Audit, is Bill Croft and Sharon Eason.
Good evening, everybody. I echo everybody else's sentiments. Nice to be here in person. The last time that I presented in front of the board was not in person, it was over Zoom. And we discussed at that point the risk assessment that was completed. And as a result of that risk assessment, it was determined that we would be doing a budget, financial accounting, and reporting and cash internal audit. And so that is what we are here to present tonight. The audit was completed in late August, early September, thanks to Danell and her team for all the help that they gave Sharon. Right off the bat, I will just say that it was a clean audit. We had a satisfactory ranking, which is the highest of all the rankings of an audit. We found a few little suggestions on how to clean a couple of things up a little bit. But other than that, it was a clean audit. And again, we presented then in front of the audit committee a couple of weeks ago. And I'm gonna pass the mic to Sharon at this point to discuss the audit in a little bit more detail.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I believe your clicker is right there if you need to click through the slide.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll go into the details now of the audit procedures that we entailed. Our responsibility was to assess the adequacy and effectiveness of internal controls over the budget, the financial accounting, and reporting operations in the district. And we reviewed the period from January 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
July 1st.
July 1st. I'm starting at the beginning. Fiscal year, not calendar year. Our audit procedures were performed in accordance with the internal standards for the professional practice of internal auditing promulgated by the Institute of Internal Auditors. Some of the procedures performed were, we reviewed the district's board policies and the business office regulations. We reviewed that the district is in compliance with its established policies and regulatory requirements. We also reviewed and assessed the budget development, the preparation, the approval, and the adoption and implementation processes. And we also reviewed and tested a sample of journal entries and a sample of bank reconciliations and cash accounts. We continued in our audit procedures. We reviewed and tested a sample of cash receipts and deposits to ensure that there's proper segregation of duties. We inquired which building departments have board-approved petty cash funds. And we also evaluated the adequacy of management's oversight to prevent inadequate reserves of excessive idle funds. And last but not least, we looked also at how the district monitors the adequacy of the securities pledged. That said, we have three ratings in internal auditing. Satisfactory is the desirable audit for every school district and Katona is no different. And then, you know, needs improvement just means that there are certain areas of weakness that needs to be improved. And of course, unsatisfactory means that there are significant deficiencies in the internal control processes. I'm happy to say, as Bill has alluded to in the beginning, that we, the Katona School District, the audit over the financial accounting, reporting, and cash received a satisfactory rating with some recommendations. And the recommendations are, is that as it relates to journal entry approval, that we recommend that the business office follow the journal entry review and approval process established by the school district. And also, as it relates to the process of outstanding checks, we recommend that the business office develop a clear procedure to identify any financial assets that has been unclaimed or abandoned after a period of specified time. And that specified time is generally a year. Any questions?
And I'll also note that as part of, part of the audit management has responded and has given us their plans to ensure that the journal entries of review process is better established and that the cash process is...
Right. And we've already started implementing an automated system for journal entry reviews. We started that at the beginning of this month, based on your recommendations. And then as far as outstanding checks, we are working with the state comptroller's office and following the procedures set and outlined by them.
So I was just gonna ask that question. So when you refer to financial assets that have been unplained, is that essentially uncashed checks that we've issued?
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you for being here. Great to see you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Danell, thank you and your team for two clean audits. It's terrific. And this cannot have been an easy year to provide our auditors with all that was required to reach these findings. So we really thank you and your team. I'm sure this represents a tremendous amount of work on your part and congratulations.
Oh, thank you. It really is a team effort with the business office. So many moving parts.
Thank you so much. Okay, then let me look at the agenda and be sure I'm in the right place. But I think this brings us to our opportunity to hear about the first month of school.
I think we're gonna have some shifting of chairs quickly and we invite our five principals to come up and join us.
Wonderful.
A brief commercial break.
A very brief.
For the auditors, their highest is satisfactory or un...
Unmodified.
They must be tough parents. Imagine? Your book report was satisfactory.
Maybe they should have that camp view. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. It's so nice to have you here. And welcome to Ashland. And I'm not sure you've even had the opportunity to meet every member of the board. But it's wonderful to have you. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome to Katona-Louisville.
Well, thank you very much. Marjorie, thank you to all of our principals for being with us tonight. We're gonna take you through a little bit of an overview of how this yet another somewhat unusual school year is working, although we're very, very, very happy that in many ways, some things are returning somewhat to normal. Everything has a caveat around it, but there are many very positive things. So I think tonight, we're gonna start with our elementary principals, we're gonna work up to the middle school and then work from there to the high school strictly in chronological order. I will be in charge of the slides.
So hi, everybody. Nice to see all of you. Kristi Harris. Abigail, we're gonna just kind of take off where you left us with this wonderful intro to the beginning of the school year, focusing on the elementary. And Carrie and Ashland, I are very appreciative to have this opportunity to share what's been going on. So welcoming back students five days a week in person has been incredibly exciting. And we've tried to make things as normal as possible within our restrictions of, you know, our health and safety protocols. And as you would expect, we place a great emphasis on our students' overall well-being. And this year, as in years past, it's always a focus at the beginning of the year around getting to know our students and making sure that they feel safe in school, physically, emotionally, socially. And this year, more so than ever, really, with this transition back from hybrid and remote, some of our students haven't been in the building for a year. We have, you know, second graders potentially who were, had half a year in kindergarten and then were remote in first grade or hybrid and coming back to like their first traditional school year. So we really took some extra care and thought and planning for the opening of schools. So first and foremost, our emphasis has been on creating a welcoming and inclusive environment for our students so that all of our students feel that they belong in our school where they, where they do so much. You'll see from this slide with just a varied pictures, the messaging, you know, that was posted in our hallways and out front and in doorways of classrooms and above lockers and cubbies and whatnot. Just sending the message, you know, all are welcome. We're the I am kind. You're welcome in this classroom. And our schools are a place where diversity and uniqueness are celebrated, where differences and similarities are explored. It helps us to connect with each other and build caring and respectful relationships. So in the classroom, once they get through that door, teachers use a variety, we just have the one slide. It's okay. Teachers use a variety of approaches and strategies that they've collected through professional, professional development opportunities and whatnot and into supporting the social, emotional wellness of our students. This is done both explicitly, like freestanding lessons. We're modeling and we're talking through the actual skills and how to come about to be an active listener, et cetera. And then it's integrated into our academic program throughout the year. So, and where these skills are then practiced and, and throughout academic subjects. It could be ELA, math, wherever it might be appropriate. So what is this, you know, trying to, I want to give you a little bit of a picture or a sound of like, what does this actually look like? What are the students actually experiencing? So read alouds is a very popular and well-used strategy. And I actually went around and just collected some, some books from my colleagues at KES and I'm sure many of them are also titles that are shared in the other classroom. What did you use over the course of the couple, you know, first weeks of school? Like The Magical Yet, as it relates to the growth mindset. A Letter From Your Teacher on the First Day of School. All are welcome. Our class is a family. My first day. So just the titles in itself kind of lends itself to the kinds of messages and discussions that were initiated at the beginning of the school year. Morning meetings or class meetings are taking place in different ways throughout the elementary classrooms. But essentially, what you would typically see is when you walk around in the morning, first thing, often this class will be standing in a circle with each other or some standing up, you know, in some formation where they're greeting each other, whether it's with different languages or they're sharing something during that greeting, personal about themselves. And it's a time when students are allowed to share feelings and thoughts and stories and memories. And sometimes the old-fashioned show and tell might be like a show and share. And even things that are relevant to their own interests and talents and family traditions can be shared. It's all about, you know, developing the relationships and getting to know each other and those skills that are so important, active listening, asking questions, learning how to give constructive feedback. Something else you might see are things like charades around feelings and can you guess my feeling? And becoming more self-aware and, and leads to more self-regulation as those skills and... as those skills and lessons develop across the course of the year. Um, and at the beginning of the year, something that you would see probably in almost all the classrooms is, um, the class working together and creating the class promise or the class constitution, something where like the class norms and the expectations, um, not so much the routines and structures that's built in there as well, but something that everyone can agree to that this is a classroom where I feel safe, where I can ask questions, where I can be myself. Um, and the code of conduct, you know, just kind of lends itself to like the rules in which we're all going to interact and, um, be responsible for, um, while we're in school. So, um, I could go on with the videos and, and the characters and stories that we have come alive and we put ourselves in the shoes of characters that we read about and see. But basically, it's really just spending really dedicated time getting to know our students. And, um, we're all really excited, um, about our students, and we look forward to getting to know them even more and developing those strong relationships that we know are so important, um, so that we can get to some of the other stuff like curriculum and other kind of ways in which we have experiences planned for them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is that me? Oh, it's still me. So, you know, this is just a slide that kind of shows over the course of the opening of school year. We felt it was so important to get, um, that in-person experience with some of our, with our families. And we, we knew that it couldn't be everybody, um, in and out because of the restrictions that we have, but we placed priority in making sure our kindergartners came in with their kindergartner families, kindergarten students came in, but the families kind of, um, met with the administration outside and got a very warm welcome from us. The new families met with us and the students got to see their classrooms and meet their teachers before school opened. Um, and then curriculum night, um, we, last year we did a lot of recording. This year we went live and the teachers put an emphasis on showing what the classroom environment looked like because some of our parents have never been in our schools if they have either new or younger. So we asked our teachers to like take pictures and take little videos and make it seem like the parents sort of walking in and feeling what the, what the, the students are experiencing. Um, we are looking forward to having some parent volunteers back in our libraries. Um, we're talking about field trips, um, those that might be outdoors and, um, enhance the experience for students. And, um, we're looking forward to our parent-teacher conferences where for those families who choose to, they're invited to come in to meet, uh, in person with, with the teachers. We'll make accommodations through Zoom for those who aren't as comfortable or aren't able.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Carrie Ford and the principal of Increase Miller. Good to see everybody again. So I'm gonna talk briefly about curriculum instruction and assessment. So as Christy was saying, we're really excited to be back in person. And, um, first of all, for relationships and building all those relationships with the teacher as well as with students among each other. Um, but also if you look through a curriculum instruction lens, um, one of the, the disadvantages of last year in the hybrid model or remote model is that, um, really we couldn't see children kind of growing and learning and practicing skills and strategies in real time. And so now that we're back all together in person, um, it's really great to see the children responding, reacting. Um, they're not on Zoom, um, and they're all together. They're interacting among each other, um, interacting directly with the teacher. And they can really, we can really see, you know, their independence, their stamina, their learning behaviors, their routines, really, um, right there in person. And the feedback and the coaching that the teacher can give, um, to the students in real time is very valuable. Um, because really that timely feedback, um, in the classroom with the children, um, really helps them grow and learn and develop. So that in-person experience is very, very much important to us, and we're so happy to be with them. And quite frankly, it's, you know, to hear their laughter in the classroom and to see their, their energy and come alive. Um, it just makes it all the more exciting for the teachers and myself and, and for the kids to be together. Um, so purposeful use of technology tools, a CSO and Schoology. Um, during our, our remote experience, um, those are our primary learning platforms that we use with the children. Um, um, and CSO is mostly focused on the primary grades like K to three or so, and even in fourth grade too. Um, so we still need to introduce those platforms to the children and, and teach them how to use them. You know, in case we have a situation where a child is quarantined or we're out for a short period of time. Um, and really what we've learned is that some of those, um, you know, platforms in and of itself are helpful in terms of posting assignments for, you know, especially for visual learners. They need to see the assignment using a graphic organizer. Um, you know, again, I mentioned the quarantine, a communication with families. Um, we also learned that this is a great way to take pictures of children in the classroom and post the assignments or post things for the families to see and communicate with us. Um, so there's certainly some benefits to that, but of course, we're prioritizing the in-person experience and in-person learning, but still introducing those tools to children, um, in case we have situations, um, such as we've had. Uh, return to our full RTI model. So last year we had, um, a limited RTI model experience. Um, some of our interventionists, I'm not sure you're aware, but they were actually assigned to be remote teachers um, or assigned to classrooms sometimes in terms of subbing, um, because we had teachers who were out for various reasons. Um, so this year we have our interventionists back in their roles um, so that we're able to provide the full range of services that we're providing this year in reading and in mathematics, and that would be K to five. So we're very excited. And in addition to that, they also, um, support our benchmarking three times a year and, and, um, our assessments, um, that they give. And they monitor student progress, um, you know, using the, uh, intervention services as well. So we're very excited to have that back, um, in full swing, um, in terms of services for students who need it. Uh, so science pilots in grades three, four and five. So we are piloting, um, these two different resources. It's Science 21 and Amplify. And, um, we need to align our science curriculum with the next generation science standards. Um, so we're piloting those programs and most recently our third and fourth grade teachers have had some professional development. And they've been involved in, um, learning about the units of study. There's about, I think there's four units for third grade, four units for fourth grade. We're fortunate to have staff developers to help to also provide support in those areas this year for the piloting. Unfortunately, the piloting got suspended during, um, COVID and during our hybrid model. Uh, so we're resuming, um, the pilots that we had had prior to COVID. Um, and so, um, we're providing training for that this year as well. And then Teachers College Partnership, that will continue, it's continuing. Um, we did have the support last year during the hybrid model as well as remote. Um, but what's nice now is that we're returning to the in-person. Um, so you might have, might recall from our previous presentations in the past that we've had lab sites where the professional developer would go into classrooms and model lessons with teachers, and there would be real-time learning with the teachers as well, side by side. And that has now resumed, and so we're continuing with the in-person. And the focus, um, this year is, um, with their K to two teachers is very much on wordwork, uh, which is supporting the phonics and phonological development of children. And in small group instruction is also another focus, K to five across the board. So we're excited to resume that in-person learning experience for our teachers as well. Um, so special area and enrichment programs. So last year, um, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we had our art teachers, music teachers and PE teachers, actually art music primarily. They were traveling to the classrooms to provide instruction, and that was due to many of the COVID guidelines that we had. Children were in fixed cohorts. This year, we're excited to have, um, the music and art teachers back in their classrooms. And so the children are traveling to their rooms. And the benefit, one of the many benefits of that is that the access to the resources, the materials that are in those classrooms, whether they're painting, using the ukulele in the music classroom, um, but really, and, you know, having, being in that environment. Um, and, and, and really the children traveling to the classrooms in and of themselves is a very, um, you know, logical or very, uh, time for them to move, you know? Oftentimes the children would be in the same classroom all day. Um, I remember going into a couple of classrooms and they say, oh, Mrs. Ford, borrow me, borrow me. So now this is their chance to really get out into a different classroom environment um, and to be in, in, in those environments and, and learn from the teachers there. So we're really excited that they were able to do that and have some movement during the day and transition time, which, you know, especially our little ones need that movement during the day. PE, um, again, last year we prioritized the PE taking place outside. Um, you know, even in the cold months, they were outside as long as the weather permitted, um, and they were terrific. And so this year again, PE is taking place primarily outside. Sometimes, you know, during inclement weather days or if the fields are wet, they take place inside in the gym. Um, and I would say the benefit of that too is that their masks don't have to be on, um, when they go outside. So that's like another mask break, if you will, for that period of time. Whereas last year they were still wearing their masks outside when they were playing. Uh, the use of the library and book selection, um, so again, the, our library media specialists were traveling to the children. The access to books was, was limited, you know, they were traveling with a cart of books. They were also reading books on their iPads or Epic as an example. Um, and so their book selection this year, going to the library, seeing the range of titles, the different levels, um, and the choices that they get are, are, are back to what they really should be. So we're really excited about that, um, and through the library. And actually today, Christy mentioned about parent volunteers. We actually had some parent volunteers today when the children weren't in the library to actually help us now start to put away books and, and, and be a part of the library program, if you will, as a parent. Um, instrumental music, we're very excited. That is just about up and running. By the end of the week, they'll be teaching, uh, in, in fourth and fifth grade classrooms, teaching small group music instruction. Um, the children have pretty much, um, had an opportunity to audition using an instrument, and, um, they have access to their instrument, and so we're gonna be up and running. Um, so again, we did not have that last year up until the spring. We reinstated fifth grade instrumental music, but now fourth and fifth grade is going to be up and running. So we're excited about that. And then special events, um, like at Increase Miller today, we had the fire department come. The whole program was outside. Um, we had, the children were very excited. They all walked away with fire hats, K to five. Uh, field trips, we actually, at Increase specifically, but I know the other schools are planning field trips as well. We had a fifth grade field trip. Everybody follows all the safety and health and safety regulations, um, in terms of wearing masks. And it, that trip was hap, happened to be outside, which we're really trying to focus on many outside activities. And I know that we all have fall celebrations, um, you know, planned for the fall, whether it's a harvest day or soup day and, um, you know, the pumpkin patch for the little ones, the Halloween parade for kindergarten, um, outside. You know, we're really planning some fun activities and enriching activities for the children so that it feels a little bit more normalized, if you will.
So speaking of health and safety, um, thank you again for welcoming me to the district. I'm Ashland. So I'm here to speak a little bit about our health and safety measures. Uh, first is we, all of our students wear masks. Um, if you've ever seen little kids wear masks, they're actually incredibly good at it, and it's just become part of the norm. Uh, we, we actually don't have to remind students very often, sometimes to lift it above the nose. We off, we offer a lot of mask breaks throughout the day. Anytime a student needs a mask break, we always give them a mask break. We're always maintaining three feet of distance, um, between the students, and we're reminding teachers, whether it's, I know at KES they do a nice little bell tone to remind the teachers, um, and the, and the students. Remember, we need to be three feet apart because little kids scooch and they try to get next to one another. So we're constantly reminding them that. Uh, we're also maintaining seating charts in all areas, just in case we have to contact trace, and that includes the buses. We are always washing hands and hand sanitizing, which the little kids call Hanatizer. Um, always using Hanatizer, um, and monitoring student health. Um, our nurses are incredible, uh, and they are at the frontline every day, checking to see symptoms and it's, you know, calling families, checking to see if it's just a bellyache, checking to see if it's something more. And so we're really thankful that we have them every day. Uh, so something that, um, is different from last year that we do, or you did last year, and that I heard was new, um, is a little bit of our lunch and recess is a little different. Um, and so in each scenario, there's like an indoor-outdoor plan. So for lunch outdoors, uh, we were just very excited to start the year. We, all of us at the elementary schools bought, um, new picnic tables, um, had plans to have lunch outside. We were super excited about this plan until the bees came. Um, and I think the last straw was when one of, I was outside for lunch and the kindergartner was like, help! And she had three bees swimming in her ranch dressing, and she was like, save them, save them! And I was like trying to pick a carrot and get the bees out, and we were like, okay, we need to move inside. Uh, so we moved inside, and as you can see from the picture, uh, we've set up, um, desks and tables in our cafeterias. The students are still together, um, but they're safely six feet apart because that's a time where you do need to take off your mask. Um, so we're, we're shifting back outdoors, um, now that the weather is getting a little bit cooler, but we have a plan with it six feet apart either way. And then recess, um, we always do outdoors. It's the one time that our co, uh, our grades mix. So third grade, all the third grade classes can play together. So, um, when we were saying before that they only get to spend time with their class, this is a time where they get to spend all together, which is really important for the social emotional, um, support and togetherness. So, um, that's indoor, and indoor recess, we have set up in different locations, um, making sure that they're, they're always three feet apart with their masks on. So then learning at home, um, we have a lot of safety measures in place, but there's always students who are going to be on quarantine, as we have learned. And so we make sure that each child has an iPad, uh, with their own Zoom account. Some students are taking them home daily. Some of the younger students leave it in school, and we collect it if they need it. As Carrie was saying before, we have access to CSO and to Schoology, so teachers can post assignments, um, on these pages, and then they can do it when they're out. We have quarantine support. Um, the teachers, the classroom teachers are signing up to support them after the school day. Um, so they're giving instruction on what they've been teaching during the day. The district has also hired, um, two quarantine teachers that are starting this week, next week, and, uh, yep, and, and two weeks from, from them. So we're excited about having teachers that are specifically supporting students with their quarantine work because it is hard for a classroom teacher to then end their day and then start their whole next day of being a quarantine teacher. So we actually had a meeting about them today to see like, what's the best use of their schedule? Thinking about working in three schools and how can we get them to support the students as much as possible. And then, um, finally, thinking about our students with special needs, thinking about the above and beyond what we're offering here. Students are getting their, um, their speech, OT, PT, resource rooms, um, and extra support with a special education teacher on top of, um, what we're already providing. That's a little bit about our health and safety, and I think that ends our, our elementary reading.
Yes. Wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Abigail took my entire presentation. So thank you very much for having us, everybody. Really appreciate, uh, you having us here. Want to echo something that Ashland said earlier, just about our nurses. Uh, they have been at the front lines, whether they are at home, um, whether they're in school. It's just a, it's a, I think I just a constant flow into that office all day long. Um, and they stay late and they come early and, um, they meet each child with a smile, even though it's behind a mask. So students are always first, but you know, it's, um, it's just, I think, good to remember how hard their jobs are during this entire pandemic. So, um, so at the middle school, uh, this is the, was the view, um, that, when you come down. Um, but once you get in our, um, building, you'll see that, hopefully, if you have children there, you're hearing that we really focused on social and emotional wellness at the beginning of this year. That was very, very important to us to make sure that students, especially adolescents, felt connected to each other, uh, friends, friends that they had to reconnect with and their teachers. Um, I know, uh, actually in Abigail's, um, speech, she talked about sixth graders and ninth graders and students new to the school, and that is always a focus for us, but even more intentionality around that this year. So just a couple of, um, just to kind of go through some of the pictures that you see up here. Uh, on the left are kind of inspirational posters that were created by our sixth grade students last year. Um, and they came back and it was like, we have to get those up on the wall. Um, good reminders for our students, just as they come in, those are right on the wall as you come, students come in from the buses each day. Um, next to that, we have just a classroom contract, so very similar to what we're doing in the elementary schools. But middle schoolers need that as well. They need to understand the rules and define kind of the parameters of the expectations of them during the classroom. Um, I'll jump over to the far one, um, that is our track. So I'll talk a little bit more about lunch and recess in a little while. Uh, but we want to make sure that students do have the opportunity to be outside, um, get a nice breath of fresh air. Um, and it is their option to take their mask off when they are outside. Um, and then the, um, again, well said in Abigail's report, uh, the middle school and high school had a similar spirit week this, this year. There were some, there were a little more high school-focused, um, topics, so we kind of toned it down. Brought me to, maybe what was it, White Lie Wednesday into Team Spirit Wednesday, I think we had. So, um, you know, but, but I think that that connection on our campus is important to both Stephen and I. And I think it's important that when one student on the campus is getting dressed to go to the high school, that the middle school student is as well. So we're all the wolves, so I think that that's, it's part of the social emotional wellness feeling, part of the community. We're all the wolves. So I think that that's, it's part of the social emotional wellness feeling, part of the community. Again, similar to the elementary school, um, really a focus on in-person instruction this year. Really having students, I think last year, since no, no teacher had ever taught to a computer before. Um, that really the technology became the focus of a lot of instruction. And one of the, um, major intentional pieces this year was to make sure that we are reminded to teach the students that are in our classrooms. So what you'll see is in part of the, um, curriculum here is the intentional nature with which we are doing that. So much like what they're doing at the elementary school, the bottom two pictures here. Um, are of a seventh grade classroom, uh, involved in the TC readers and writers workshop model. So it's something you wouldn't have seen if you were in our buildings a couple of years ago. Now we have students both reading and writing their own individual books at their own level of challenge, um, in the middle school level. So that is where we've put a lot of professional development into that the last couple of years. And so I just wanted to make sure that since you haven't been in our buildings, that that is something that you would see because I'm sure. You have reports from Mary talking about the curriculum instruction, et cetera. Um, in our top left corner, that is our kitchen space, our family consumer science space. Um, you can see how well it is spaced out. Uh, we purchased some new furniture to allow a little more mobility in our classrooms. So we're very excited about that. Uh, bottom left-hand corner is a sixth grade classroom. We are really, really excited that students can group up and still be three feet apart. Um, and it, again, it's that, it's that conversation that they probably have missed so many times, even in a breakout room. It's just so different. You're learning how to read body language. You're making eye contact with people, even though there's still this barrier of a mask. And then on the right side of the screen, you'll see it's one of our technology classes. So I know a, a concern of ours coming into this year was. Will students be back on technology even though they're in the building? And so in technology class, yes. Um, so you'll see students, uh, we've totally revamped our technology space. We're really excited about it. Uh, the students here are working in small groups on something called Scratch, uh, which is the beginning of, of coding. At the middle school level. Um, something we are really excited about this year is we're starting, uh, we did some curriculum work over the summer. And we're doing what's called a level up program. So in that picture, if you were to look, uh, more intently. You may see that there are students of multiple grades, multiple grades in the same area. So we really are looking at the students and what they can do and then grouping accordingly, uh, specifically in our technology classrooms. Schoology is still our driver. It's the way that we stay organized from last year to this year. Uh, so if students are ever out for sickness, they can always check their Schoology page. So that is something that, um, we are making, um, making sure that we are doing. A last piece on there, uh, facing history and ourselves. That is the work that we are doing to make sure that, you know, history does have a different, um, view than probably when many of us went through school. And saying that there are multiple perspectives to history as it was written. There were, there were many different people living, living a different experience than we all learned about. So. Um, that is our work in, um, diversity, equity and inclusion. One of the, one of the things that we are doing at the middle school. Um, this is our, uh, just page to say, let's stay connected. Uh, when we went fully virtual last year, there were a lot of questions. You know, uh, parents were probably spending more times with, with their adolescent children than they ever had, um, in previous generations. Um, so we really, we took the time and I said to our school psychologist, like, what are some of the hints that we can give to our parents? So we wanted to share that on our webpage, we have created what's called the JJM S video library. If anybody has a better, more inventive name, please share it with us. Um, but there's a spot there for both students and for parents. So if you look at the, the parents page and you click on that, there are little videos, little tutorials for parents. Um, so that you can stay connected, um, and help, uh, help your child set up a, a homework space. Um, reminders about how and when to contact a teacher, et cetera. So we wanted to make sure that that was highlighted for our community. Uh, we already went over the Schoology piece, but the other real kind of silent partner at the middle school is our PTO. Uh, they are helping us with our field trips that have already occurred, uh, for sixth grade and then our, our upcoming seventh and eighth grade field trips as well. They help us with that financially, but really kind of a silent partner. You don't see as many parents in the library as you may. We're helping out with events as you may at the elementary school, but we know parents still want to be involved and our PTO is really fantastic. Uh, so for health and safety, again, very similar to the elementary school, we are providing, uh, mask breaks for our students. We generally do that for lunch and recess. Uh, students do need to step out in the hallway. They absolutely can. Uh, students may, you know, go get a drink just so they can take their mask off, get a drink quickly and return to class. Uh, but maintaining the three feet of distance between students. Unlike probably our, uh, my elementary counterparts, we put some of that responsibility on the students as well. Desks shift and so our reminders to students are not only, you know, make sure that you sit in the desk that is three feet away. But also, you know, you're, you shouldn't be shoulder to shoulder now. I think middle school students are probably magnetic. Again, if you have any of them at home, it's very hard for them to remember that. Uh, but we, you know, remind them early and often. Um, and that's probably why they enjoy being outside, walking the track like you saw earlier. And again, like our, like we said, our nurses monitor student health. Again, students may feel anxious, uh, in the pandemic. So allowing them to go and check in and. You know, sit down and take a mask break in the nurse's office is also part of our practice. And we still have the signage. I thought that was important. To show that's, that that hasn't gone away, that we are still in a pandemic. So lunch and recess has been a big topic at our school this year. Um, and so I just, I wanted to take a little bit of time and kind of share why. Um, so our academic day allows for 40-minute classes at the middle school. Um, we do have a period called, called home base. We can get into in a little while if you would like. Um, but it is, home bases are grounding for students each day. They come in, they have a daily planner, um, they sit down with it, they look at their schedule for the week. Um, so that, that's the beginning of our day. So that is about 20 minutes each morning for our students. So that's our grounding. Um, adolescents connect with each other. It's a sixth through eighth grade process. Again, I can answer questions when we get to the question piece. Um, but that allows 40-minute classes, 42-minute classes for the remainder of the day. So I have had some questions from families. Can we, can we lengthen the time of lunch, lunch? And if we were to do that, it would shorten the rest of our academic classes and we would get off in our curriculum area from, you know, early classes to, uh, midday classes. So our lunch and recess, we have to serve 255 sixth graders in 40 minutes, including both a lunch and a recess. When we are indoors, we are confined to six foot spacing. Last year we were able to use an entire gymnasium. This year there are actually too many students to use the gymnasium in the hallway that we did last year. So we decided to break that group. We decided to break lunch into two. So you can eat first and have recess second, or you can have recess first and eat second. We continue to refine. We just made another move the other day, trying to, you know, move students from recess down a little bit early to maximize that time. Um, but if any of you have ever had a sixth, seventh or eighth grader, it usually does not take them 20 minutes to eat their food. It's usually a lot more time socializing, et cetera. But now when we are actually in that process, um, we have both an indoor and an outdoor plan. Every day, whether we are indoors or outdoors, there is a recess and a lunch. If we are outdoors for recess, um, the options are to walk up to the track. Um, to, and then we actually have some spaces open indoors as well. If you look in the bottom left-hand corner, that is our maker space, brand new to our building this year, again, supported by the PTO. And people who want to get rid of things like cardboard, et cetera. So that's also a plug, if any of you are looking to do that. Um, but our maker space for that 20 minutes, we have a challenge of the day. So and, and the day that I took this picture was the airplane tower challenge. Students have glue guns. They have a bunch of different things and those are some of the examples of what students created. So. Different challenges each day. You don't want to participate in the challenge. There are plenty of other things that you can build or, or be involved with in our maker space. So we're super excited about that. Students can also go to the library, whether it's indoors or outdoors. When we are fully indoors, we also open up our, um, our gymnasiums. So the students can run around if they would like to. We know how important it is for students to kind of get some energy out, again, especially at the middle school level. Um, and when we are outdoors, we sit in the front circle. So kind of a mid picture above the planes. Uh, we spread out on our front circle, uh, for eating, and then you can see the indoor space. Uh, we do not have, um, desks. We have a very quick changeover and there is no opportunity for us to wipe down all the desks before the next students come in. Uh, so we've decided to stay with chairs for this year. Uh, we felt it was the most sanitary way to get so many students fed, uh, we're in, when we're in an indoor environment. And again, similar to our, um, our elementary counterparts. I think the biggest difference for, um, between middle school and elementary school is that we have counselors at the middle school who are really managing student absences. If students have to, uh, you know, if they're quarantined for any reason. So, uh, there is a solution to them being supported after school hours. Um, by a professional, um, but the number one priority is making sure that they are following along on the Microsoft suite. Making sure they are following along with Schoology. They can follow along with, throughout the day and then connect with their after school person. Um, and like was said before, our specialized services, um, there may be an option of coming in during the day. A mix of daytime, kind of like zooming into classes and also, um, an afternoon, uh, connection with a support provider, et cetera. Think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Stephen Sisley, good to see you all again. Appreciate you having us here tonight.
Welcome.
Stephen, Stephen, I think we need to get you a microphone so the switch camera captures. Thank you.
How's this better?
Great.
Okay, thank you. Uh, much of what you'll hear Abigail has covered, but I can assure you I did my own homework. I just wanted to take a moment to say that this is my 18th year as a principal, my ninth as a high school principal. And I can't express how different the beginning of this year has been for the 18 years I'm doing this. There has just been such a positive energy, a positive vibe. I think everyone is just so aware, even if we're not articulating it all the time, we're just aware of what was lost. And so now coming back has been just so invigorating and some of the best parts of my day start in the beginning of the day. When I'm out at the main doors and I'm greeting, uh, students and parents who are coming in via their cars and it's a, it's just a great way to start. So. Again, I thank the board and I thank, uh, superintendent and the cabinet, just for all the support and, and parents and students. So. With that being said, we can move into our first slide. And based on what I just said, I thought that, you know, restoration and renewal, I think were appropriate subtitles. And as we learned, it's just that social piece is what has been missing. Uh, even in the, the research that we're reading about the, the effects of the pandemic. Uh, really no one is saying the answer is remediation. Let's go from 11 to 14 hours in front of the screen to 11 to 14 hours in a book. No one is saying that. They're all saying the same things, connection, restoring as much as we can. And that's really our goal and that's what we're hoping to do. And so renewal also means let's add some new things that we haven't done before. And so our senior class advocated for, and that is senior sunrise. And it was fun being on the contest field at 6:00 AM. So it did double as pajama day for some of the students, but hey, it's, uh, it was fun. And it was just one more opportunity to put this back together. I think about 60 of our seniors showed up. So that's not a bad showing. I think, uh, that was good. Spirit week that Abigail touched on, I didn't realize how many John Jay students had Western gear. So that was a lot of fun and it was, there was great participation and administration got these big tacky sheriff badges, but you know. It's, uh, it worked out. It was a lot of fun and, uh, white lie Wednesday, we, yes, we had some concerns, but ultimately we said, no, we're going to trust them. And they came through as we knew they would. So that, that was a lot of fun. Uh, we all got involved with that too. And my white lie of the day was I am a real doctor. So. We had fun. We'll go to the next slide. So again, we're talking about bringing new things in. One of the commitments that we were working through over the summer, and this is probably going to be a multi-year project at the high school, was that we really want to increase. Student leadership, increase their footprint in the building. And so one of the things that we did with the help of Tom Rizzotti and, uh, and the teachers was to develop a freshman retreat. And we recognized too, that our ninth and our 10th graders really have not had the transition experiences that normally our students receive. So we felt that this was an important addition. It's a work in progress. Uh, you know, Mary Ford and I have been speaking about, uh, finding a facilitator to help us think this through. So it may be about a three-year process where we would hope to even include some targeted leadership curriculum. So right now is that we have our student leaders. Uh, we have about 120 of them. Uh, so they have been connected with freshmen. They're going to be the check-in. In prior years, we would be pulling freshmen out of lunches and as we learned over the years, about up to a third of them really didn't like that anymore. So. Uh, so we're just changing that up. So we gave them the freshman retreat where it was a full day of bonding activities. Uh, so they were divided into their packs and just, uh, it was a good day. And I know, uh, Lenore Person did a wonderful job of covering that and that is on the district's website and invite everyone to please take a look when you can. Uh, so that was a wonderful day. Uh, homecoming, again, it was, uh, like everything came together beautifully. It was a great game. It was a nail biter. It was great attendance, great energy. You win. It's, it's beautiful weather. It's like, wow, just bottleless and it's wonderful. Sophomores for the first time, and I can't remember when, won the homecoming, uh, floats. They, they really stepped up their game and good for them. So that was a lot of fun. And also we returned the club fair. And we had about 35 clubs all out there, trying to solicit students to join them, get involved, get connected. Great turnout. And as I'm walking around, I'm seeing a lot of names on the rosters. So, and that's really been our message. Try it. You know, you may not know what you want to do between the years of 14 to 18, welcome to the world, but you may find something that grabs you. And so that's why these clubs are so important. And as always, we're trying to increase, uh, the participation, increase the amount of fun. So. We're already thinking about next year that perhaps it goes on the lawn. We get the smell of funnel cake in the air. I guess we'll be talking about food trucks again eventually, but, but not tonight. We can continue, please. We had an outdoor pep rally. Uh, we wanted to have it, uh, the day of homecoming, but we had torrential rain on Thursday. And it rained again on Friday morning. So out of a concern about safety, we did postpone it. And again, I've never called a snow day before, but by 11 o'clock it was beautiful outside and kids wanted to know what's going on here. So. Uh, but again, a pep rally delayed was not denied. So we just did it the following week. We attached it to another home football game. And I gotta tell you, it was fun and, but it's a different energy outside. You don't have the thunder that you have inside the gym. So that's something that we're going to look at for the, for the spring or maybe the winter as Abby is, uh, Abigail has, uh, made me aware of. Uh, we could talk about that. Maybe the phys ed teachers in a rap battle. Why don't we, we'll start off with something fun, right? So we do have like a minute clip that I'd like to share with you and, uh, you take a look.
And this, this video produced by students at the high school in the.
Yes, from our video club, Seneca Schwartz. Thanks to the John Jay Videography Club. That was a, a good time. As you can see, we have a new pep band. They are in the process of still rehearsing. I'm amazed at how many songs they learn so quickly. They had a repertoire of like seven to eight. I was just so impressed with that. That was wonderful. They're in the process of finding a name, just like, you know, Stephen Colbert has his band's name. And so they're thinking of some things and, uh, try to build an identity for them. So that's, that's been great. Some of the nuts and bolts, uh, some of the things, just the, the day-to-day workings of the high school, uh, morning arrival has been interesting. Uh, even though we are still beginning at eight o'clock, uh, the last buses are coming in and the last cars are pulling up around 8:03, 8:04, 8:05. However, I think it's best to just leave it alone because we do have a longer first period. We build in an extra six minutes for announcements. So we get that time back. And it's just wondering that if we moved back to eight, 10, would everything just kind of move along with it? And then we would be losing class time. So I think we're in a good place there. Uh, there in the cafeteria, uh, you see that we have increased the amount of seating. So inside the main cafeteria, which you're seeing there. main cafeteria, which you're seeing there on the left-hand side, that is the hallway in front of the auditorium. So we do have desks that are out there, just so we can have the spacing that we need. I think we've done a good job. And also, the 10th graders can now leave campus for lunch for the first time. So that has also helped disperse, and my poll numbers, I guess, are pretty good with the 10th grade right now. So, but it's a long year. So that's working out pretty well. And then, as you see here, the library, you know, the, you know, the furniture is a great help in terms of being able to distance. And we do have the room in the back that is amply used. And so again, the library is back to normal. Kids are coming in. It's, it's working pretty well. Classrooms, you know, again, the instruction has just been fantastic, and teachers just continue to say the same things, that they're just so glad that kids are back. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, about what, what teaching looks like for this year, and where we want to go with it. That'll be in just a minute. But we've also been trying to have some fun with the bells. Our music tech students have created new chimes for us. So we've replaced the, the factory bells with something that of their creation. 8:00, yes, we've had some experimentation with, I think Revelry is underrated. But when you work for Uncle Sam, it stays with you. We've had the theme from Rocky. We've had Miley Cyrus. Now, we also have on ninth periods on Fridays at 2:38, you hear the whistle, and then yabba dabba doo. And it was great to see kids saying, what is that? So there was an opportunity for culture. I hope that's working out well. So, but we're going to continue to have some fun with that, too. And that's really what we're trying to do. I mean, you want to walk into a hug as much as you can. And then, yes, there's time to get down and to bear down and to get to work. And I think our students are definitely doing that as well. So I think if we move along. I think we're in very much the same boat as the, the rest of the district. I think an advantage at the high school level is that because of the age of our students, the rates of vaccination have helped tremendously. I have had very limited need to do contact tracing, and the ones that I've personally been involved with, just about every phone call was a sigh of relief. Yes, vaccinated, they will send in their, their materials. So that is working well. And like the middle school, the counselors are taking care of those students who do require that piece. Also, something that we have never done before, we have never had a virtual webinar. We have never had a, an assembly program online. So this was a great victory for, for technology. I want to thank Vicki Weiss in our English department. So through a friend of a friend, she was able to get ahold of Jose Antonio Vargas. This was our summer read. And I think in terms of the equity work, I'm very proud to say that our English department has kind of been ahead of the curve, where they have been looking at this topic for a number of years and having that guide, the summer read. And it's been said that the reason we read is that because we just can't meet everyone. And you're not going to really learn about anyone else's experience unless you dive into it and you make it a priority. And so I think the English department has done very good work there. And so it was, it was very interesting. I think it was a great webinar. I think the speaker was very engaging. Our students had made some questions that they had pre-submitted, and then they were able to free associate and ask any questions that came up afterwards. I think he shared his email, and so I think some kids will be making some connections with him. And, you know, part of his message beyond his, his own issues was that, look, you know, you, you can be what you want to be in this life. And you find the mentors, and you believe in yourself, and you work, and those things will happen. There's another piece of it that I think was important in terms of our work, is that he also brings up the reality of immigration. And so seeing as our high school students are going to be voters very soon, voting on this very emotionally charged issue, they need to have a perspective. And so with that, I'm also proud to say that the League of Women Voters was here today to register our students to vote. So again, it's all working hand in hand. So this was a very good experience. And again, we thank Vicki Weiss for that very much. This piece. We subscribe to what's called the Marshall Memo. And so administrators, we get this, and it kind of gives us up-to-date research in the field as to what's happening. And I came across a quick one-page synopsis of the work of Justin Reich and Jal Maida from MIT and Harvard about what are the lessons of COVID? What's happening nationwide? How are schools responding to this? Because even though February of 2019, we were still a very strong institution, there's always things that we can do better. And we also know that there are always some populations of kids we have to do a better job with. So I think with that as a frame, that kind of turned me on to reading the entire document. And I came across a frame that now I'm working through with my staff. So the lessons of COVID, so we just don't revert back to February 2019 by default. What do we want to amplify? What have we learned that works? What did kids tell us that I really learned even during COVID when you did this? So that's important. It also gives the language of what to hospice. Are there some practices that we do that it's just time to let them go? And therefore, what do we have to recreate in order to do that? And as easy as that may sound, it's, it's difficult. You know, I've, I've lost 20 pounds in my life, and I've found them. You know, so it's, it's, it's going to be ongoing work. But I, we've started this conversation in September. We just did another one in the last faculty meeting, where it's breaking them up into smaller groups and really hammering this out. And really thinking about their experience and what to, what to include. In the last faculty meeting we had, I now asked them to start prioritizing. So I just borrowed from Stephen Covey, what do you think is urgent and important, not urgent, but important, you know, and so on and so forth. And just a way to get us to think about this. I'm going to continue that process with students, and then I'm going to continue that process with parents. And so once I have like a final blueprint of, at least here's the consensus of what people are saying, and then I share it with, with the district, and we make plans from there. There's what the teachers were doing at the last faculty meeting. And again, very, very good discussions. And I'm very happy to see some of the things that they put as may not be urgent, because the school year has started, but it's important, especially when it comes to student autonomy, student stress, mental health. How do we grade and assess? So some very, very important items that it was like, all right, good. Very, very pleased. Have to take any questions as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We really cannot express how refreshing and heartening it is to hear your enthusiastic report from the field, and also just to hear the way in which you speak with such dedication and commitment to students and to providing them with a quality, welcoming, supportive environment after what was just incredibly challenging year for children and for each of you. And you're doing a great job of not emphasizing how challenging this must be every single day. We really appreciate the shout out to the nurses. Thank you very much. And for that reminder. But also, please allow us to thank each of you for what we know you're doing above and beyond every day at home and on the weekends, and that, you know, your jobs are just beyond recognition from pre-pandemic. So please know that we do, we can't pretend to really understand it the way you understand it and live it every day, but we do see it. And we, we thank you. We're very grateful. I'm sure people have some questions and comments, but really, thank you for coming tonight and for being here for developing slides on top of everything else. And for sharing these reflections on how you've approached and structured the beginning of school to make sure that our students felt supported. With that, I'll turn it over to board colleagues for some comments and questions. Please, Liz.
I think that it was very interesting in, in this presentation, how all of you really, as compared to last year, where we were, you know, kind of mired down with obstacles. But all of those have kind of turned into opportunities. And that optimism, and then, you know, just the consistent learning across the district, and administration, for teachers, and even for students about how things are, are going to work now, and, and just the happiness of being back together. I think, just want to say thank you to all of you. It's been an amazing start to the year. My students are very happy, happy, happy to be in school, and really having a good time. So thank you all so much for all your hard work, because I know it's been a lot for the last year and a half, years.
Yeah, Phil, please.
Wonderful summary. Always wants me to go back. Not sure I want to be a teacher anymore, but a student seems, seems to be a good idea. So I had, there were two, two mentions. Somebody mentioned the, a new science curriculum. And then there was something about a new facing history in ourselves. I'd like to hear a little bit, if, if somebody is aware of the details of, remember when we changed the math curriculum, it was sort of a big deal. There was sort of a, a lot of things that had to change, and new books, and stuff like that. What's the science curriculum like? Is it, this is from the state?
Well, it's basically Science 21 and Amplify are two of the, the resources that have been identified for to pilot. And so we have to align with basically the New York State Next Generation Science standards. And so we're starting with third, fourth, and fifth, but eventually we'll have to shift to K1 and 2. So there's, we haven't selected one yet. So you, and you might recall, like we went through an adoption process when we selected a curriculum. But we have not done that. Right now, we're just piloting and evaluating different programs and to see, you know, what are the benefits? What are the, you know, what they can offer? You know, inquiry-based, experiential, like hands-on, like those are the things that we're looking for. And so
Different, different topics, but different modes of
Different topics, yeah. So under, you know, life science, physical science, earth science. So they're still falling under those categories, if you will. And primary Ford could probably talk more in-depth about some of them. But we have to, you know, there's cross-cutting concepts embedded in each of the units. So the, the teachers just had some recent training in third and fourth grade with the first units, and they have eight sessions in each grade level, grade three and then grade four. And so again, we did pilot some resources prior to COVID, but we never fully got it off the ground. So that's what we're, we just started. So with the professional learning. Yeah, yeah. So we're curious to see how the children respond to the experiences as well.
Right. And then the, the one with the facing history in ourselves, somebody mentioned that in, in regards to diversity, equity, inclusion, and it's different than what we learn. What would be some examples? Is, I remember somehow all of my history classes stopped at World War II. Like history stopped after that. The rest is up to you to figure out, right? I would imagine some areas of the things I learned in American history are taught a little differently, or different emphasis. You talk about different voices are included?
I think the biggest thing is the change of history.
The biggest difference.
Is just going from the single story to multiple perspectives on, on, on the story, right? So I think it, facing history in ourselves has been around for a while. I think it probably started at the high school. It's worked its way down through. So all of our social studies teachers, at this point, have had the training. And it's in some of our English classes, people that kind of preceded my time here. So it's really a lens that you overlay on the curriculum, kind of like a process, a way to process with students. So not necessarily a new curriculum, but kind of just a different lens to look at our curriculum through.
I think this is the type of thing where people who can misunderstand it, and it can be a contentious discussion about this. Have you found that this has raised any of that? When people get to know it, it's like, well, yeah, this is just, it's more facets to history than we used to think.
At the high school level, there were some questions about the use of the 1619 Project. That came up a couple of times last year. So it was important for us just to help the, the parent understand is that this is not the curriculum. This is just a selection that we would take in any AP class to augment. And just, you know, as Jeff has been saying, it's just, it's giving a larger platform and a different voice to those who tend not to be heard. And as somebody, again, I taught US history when I was in the classroom. So much of what we've been discussing has been in the curriculum for 25 years. So it's, it's not new. It's just how much emphasis is it getting versus prior years. And I think it's given a more rich experience. And again, it's leading to, I guess, nuts and bolts conversations of what should, for example, what should immigration policy be? And that's an appropriate question for our students.
Thank you. Sounds good.
I also want to say thank you. I know how, we all know how hard it has been for you guys for the last two years. And listening to you guys and your optimism as leaders of your building, and knowing how difficult it's been for our teachers, seeing your optimism and your encouragement is so nice for us to see, because I know that it's been so difficult for them. So I'm so glad that you guys are being so supportive, which then trickles down to our students, which is really the most important thing. I do have two questions, and I don't mean to put the middle school and the high school on the spot. The things, one thing that I hear, do you guys have any idea when you're going to allow students to get back into the locker rooms to change before gym classes? It's hard for the students to have first-period gym and then have to stay in their clothes the whole day. I just, I know that that's been a topic of conversation among our teenagers. Any idea when that might happen?
Middle to high school.
Yes.
Yeah, so we actually changed our practice a couple of years ago with our sixth graders. We said that our sixth graders don't need, they haven't really gone through full puberty yet, et cetera. So that was kind of off the table. I think the, I think that's a driving force for us is that 15 total minutes over a 24-hour period, and not being able to, like, there's language in the, in some of the guidance, it talks about not being able to monitor or maintain mask wearing. And so when you have students over the course of a day, they're in the hallways together. There, there are a lot of different places. And when you add locker rooms, and students could come out late because the teacher's already begun the class, it's kind of like an unknown entity that we weren't willing to take the risk for our students for the, for the total time period. We do understand, we ask kids to wear sneakers on PE day, et cetera.
I got it. It's a COVID.
I don't know where, yeah.
Just wondering if you had. No.
Yeah, on the high school side, I think the, the concern is the, probably no way to do any sort of social distancing while students are in there, and not being able to get the area cleaned rapidly. So that has been kind of the driver. I think some of the ways that the phys ed departments tried to mitigate it is by being outside as much as possible, but also modifying activities where we don't think that kids are working up that much of a sweat, that now hygiene could become an issue. But I, I'm, I'm not unsympathetic to the, the concern. And I think we'll, we'll keep talking.
Thank you for everything. Everybody's so happy to be back.
Thank you. Yeah, please, Rory.
I mean, thank you all. We're, we're so indebted to you. And I, I really appreciate the emphasis and the focus on the students and, and you helping us understand just how well the students are doing. And I do have a question I'll get to about how the teachers are doing. But I'd just like to say that we feel really fortunate that, that you guys are all at the helm of your respective buildings, and that the, the leadership examples that you guys set is clearly trickling down, and the energy and the positivity is on display tonight. But it has been on display since the very beginning of the school year. And I think that's, that's really a testament to how engaged and dedicated and committed to our students that each of you is. So a big appreciation for that. Thank you. As I was going through, listening attentively, I attentively, I was highlighting things that I thought, wow, that's positive, that's so positive. I want to make a little note of that. But I have highlights all over my notes here, so I don't, I don't want to maybe reiterate what's there. And I did come up with a couple of questions that I thought, rather than ask four or five questions, I, I really think I owe it to the district to just ask, how are the teachers doing? How are the teachers doing? So, you know, they're really at the forefront of all of this, the, the special ed teachers, the standard teachers. How, how does it feel for them to be back? And are they fully re-engaged? Is there still some trepidation on their part about coming into the buildings? And I mean, I, you don't all need to answer, but just sort of a general feel, are, are staff members feeling good about it?
I mean, I'll, I'll just speak in general at the elementary. I mean, I think, I mean, the last year and a half, as you can imagine, if you've, thank you so much for thanking all of us, because it, as challenging as it was for you as parents to have the children home and dealing with the pandemic, it was equally challenging to be in the schools. I think last year was very challenging in the beginning. And, you know, it was, it was scary, quite frankly, for a lot of the professionals to come in and with the unknown. And then over time, we became more comfortable. And to be honest, I think the children really helped to make it comfortable. You know, once, when you're in a classroom and you're teaching, you often just forget the outside world around you, if you will, and that you kind of get absorbed in the moment with the children and responding to them and, and teaching them. And so, but I think, you know, over time, it became, you know, they became more accustomed. But there were bumps in the road, you know, with quarantines or remote instruction last year. And so there was a lot of Um, and so there was a lot of, you know, support, I think, from all of us, um, with the staff, um, and, and kind of helping them, you know, move through it. And, and some people were in different places on the continuum. Um, and I think now, you know, I think with the vaccines, um, I think people are definitely had a sense of relief um, and felt more comfortable and secure. Um, but there's still like, you know, a natural cautiousness. Um, and we're, you know, and our little ones, our kiddos at the elementary level aren't vaccinated. So we're very cognizant of that. Um, and so I think there's definitely like an enthusiasm and a positivity this year and excitement um, to have the children back in front of us. And it, and really it's the preference, um, you know, because you get such a good connection with the children and the, the positive feedback. Um, but I think it's evolved, you know, over the time. Um, and so I, but I think definitely there's, they're in a different place in terms of, you know, feeling a, a little bit more comfortable and secure. And again, you just, you forget, you're all wearing masks, but you just forget because they're children and, you know.
Uh, just maybe to follow up on, on that, since we're on the elementary school. So we've added two teachers for quarantine, uh, which we're delighted that we're able to do that. Do you feel like it's enough? And obviously we can't, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know how many kids are going to be quarantined, but are there additional resource? Like, wh- wh- where are you guys on the elementary school level? Where are you thinking about that, given that none of the kids are vaccinated? Yes.
Yeah, sure.
I feel like I should take this one since MetoCon got hit hard in the beginning. Um, we, it's really hard because we had so many students right away who were quarantined, but now have one. Um, so there is that natural ebb and flow that we were trying to figure out today. Like, is there a consistent um, number of students who's, who are going to be out? But, um, you know, we're trying to figure out the best way for us to kind of attack, like, okay, when a student is on quarantine, what are the different things that we have to do? Like, what is the protocol? What should we, you know, who, who do we have to reach out to? How are we checking their IEPs? How are we checking to make sure that we have everything and we're supporting them the best that way, way we can? And so, you know, I think the two quarantine teachers are a really great start. We also have the teachers who are volunteering to tutor. And so that's helpful to have in case, you know, we, we need them. And it's been really amazing to see all the teachers work together. I think currently I have a middle school teacher teaching, um, some of my students who are out on quarantine. And so we really just kind of pulled together and said, who's interested? Who can do it? Who can take the student? Um, and, and so that's been really great.
That's amazing.
That's great. That's amazing.
If you, if you don't mind, I'd just like to come back to your original question. As soon as I stop talking, I talk to myself, oh my God. I didn't say the, like, I feel like I didn't say enough positive about our teachers. Uh, and the fact that they're there every day, um, really just, I think that they're so excited. We had a teacher, we do a good news as part of our, beginning of our faculty meeting each, each month. And she said, thank God, it's October 2021 and not October 2020 anymore. Yeah. It is that optimism that I think so many of our teachers walk through the door with this year. That they're, they're just so excited to, again, not be tethered to a device. Um, because I think that that just changes the feel of a classroom. Yeah. Be working with students, sidle up to them, see what's going on, be able to assess and kind of access those skills that they honed over years and years. And now all of a sudden they're like, oh my God, this is what it's supposed to feel like. Yeah. So that's, I think, the overall feeling in our building, just how excited people ought to be back. Seeing, seeing their colleagues and, um, I think they've, they've just done an awesome job throughout the past 19 months. To land where we are now, it gives a testament to all of their mental health, well-being, to get through everything.
Again, I can echo what they're saying. There's, there's also the other side of it too, is that we've had teachers, again, who are human beings and they have suffered loss and who has had to say goodbye to relatives and parents and and some are suffering through that and we're trying to help them through. And it was brought to our attention again about, you know, what job the nurses are doing right now. So I think they need a little more of our personalized attention. Take the lunch order on Tuesday, all that kind of good stuff. It's, uh, so there's still, there's still some recovery happening. And that's true of kids too. I think, uh, I've been informed by, by my clinicians that the amount of kids who required hospitalization, uh, has been higher than what they have seen in past years. So there's, there's still a lot of work to be done. This is great optimism. We need it. We celebrate it. And yet we're still keeping our eye on the ball.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Ilana, please.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to also echo what everybody said. I really appreciated hearing about, um, the threads through all levels of school around the social emotional learning, around sort of the attention to recovery and restoration and really seizing the opportunities. And also, um, really excited about the voter registration drive that you've done for high school students. And I, I really appreciate the reflection on what's been learned from COVID and the kind of where we go from here and that framing that you offered. And, and also heard the challenge, logistical, the real logistical challenges of kind of opening up with still restrictions and, and that, and, and going through that. Um, I did want to just follow up a little bit on Rory's question about at the elementary school level, if you have ideas yet on what the quarantine learning might look like. Um, I know the teachers are being hired, but do you have any more sort of what that? And any more framing around it yet? Or is that still kind of in development?
Yeah. I, so, um, what, like one of the teachers I think is starting just next week. So we need to get them on board, but there's been, you know, conversation about having a morning meeting online and, and focusing on ELA and mathematics, um, you know, because the duration of time that they're out, we want to just kind of maintain some of those, you know, skills, especially with math, because everything builds upon each other, like if they're missing certain lessons. Um, but the teachers will still be like involved in turn, in terms of telling us like where they're at and like what they're working on, the strategies and the skills. So I think we're basically just building, you know, a schedule, um, together with like how to, you know, manage it. Because if, if a child is quarantined for 10 days, they might be out of school for, you know, about seven or ish or so. So those are the things like we're thinking through. Like, how can we also not have a child be alone? Cause part of it is like a social experience too. So how can we basically across all three schools, have the children together on Zoom for a period of time? So synchronous, asynchronous, we're, we're trying to balance that out.
I'm going to not say thank you. It would make me feel bad. But, um, I think one of the things that's really interesting about coming back after COVID and that I hope we can reflect on in future years. You know, I know, um, as a district, social emotional wellness has been something that we really have focused on with our therapeutic support program that we started at the high school, moved to the middle school and now have, you know, elements of it in the elementary. So I don't think it's new for us to focus on this, but I think the impact of the last 18 months on our students has really made this a really explicit focus for us. And I really think it will be interesting to see how much that impacts learning, um, with that as sort of the foundation of which the year is built. And so, you know, I think it's something we're focusing on in this post-COVID period, but I, I hope and imagine that maybe this becomes sort of a standard practice of how we always come back to school and how we always think about students. I, I think, um, my ninth grade son said, like, my, you know, middle school is three years and I lost half of it. And he said that to me the other day and I thought, wow, like that's, it, that's real. And so I think, you know, really the fact that we're thinking so much about sort of helping the kids get, get back into sort of a, a new routine and opportunities for them to really, um, be heard and seen, I think is really great. So thank you for doing that. And I, I look forward to hearing about it in future years because I think it's really an interesting approach to, to helping our students be successful. But thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you again. We don't want to keep you even a minute longer. It's already going on 9:20. We're so grateful that you could be with us here tonight in person. It's great to see you. We so appreciate your leadership and your buildings and your hopefulness. And thank you. Be well. And we look forward to hearing how the year progresses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Terrific. Welcome back. Okay. Thank you again. That was really terrific. And, uh, we appreciate hearing from building leaders at every level. Um, tonight we have just two more, I think relatively brief conversations. We're going to revisit our board goals and tonight we have the opportunity to vote on a resolution to adopt the board goals for the school year. And then thereafter, we'll revisit our finance committee charge and have the opportunity to vote on that. I'm not sure whether we have any further discussion around the board goals, uh, at both the last meeting and the meeting prior. We discussed the framework that the Board of Education has utilized over the past couple of years. And we have a goal centered around leadership and a goal centered around fiscal stewardship. We updated the leadership goal, um, somewhat in response to changing circumstances and things we've been hearing from our community. And if anybody would like to say anything about the goals, we can pause for a brief discussion. And otherwise, I'm happy to take a motion to adopt the goals. Would somebody like to move the board goals? Thank you Rory. Seconded by Liz. Thank you. Any further discussion? Comment? If not, thank you so very much. Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Seven zero. Terrific. And item 9.05, I'm happy to turn it over to Rory or Donnell, if anybody would like to just provide a brief recap of where we are and then we can go ahead and vote on the charge for the finance committee.
Uh, thanks Marjorie. Yeah, just briefly, um, so we typically before now, in a given year, we, um, would, uh, pass a, a charge for the finance committee for the year. Finance committee has not yet been met, although we are scheduled to meet next Tuesday. This year, you know, typically what we've done in years past, since year 2017, 2018, is, uh, we looked at a report that was generated then and we tried to identify areas where either we were out of alignment with our peers or there was some other anomaly with the way in which we were handling our finances. And we use that to develop the charge for the finance committee. Uh, this year we felt that there were really none remaining since our analysis, our thorough analysis in 2017. And so, um, with the guidance of, of the board and the administration, we decided that we would re-up and, and rerun the 2017, 2018, um, analysis. So and, and then based on the outcome of that analysis, uh, direct the, the finance committee to essentially identify and uh, analyze any anomalies that we may identify. So it's a little bit vague, but it's going to be very helpful, not just for this year, but also for years to come. So in essence, that's what the, I, I don't know if you want me to read it to you.
I don't think it's necessary. It's in public content. I think it's.
It's in public content. So I think that's essentially, um, what we're, um, resolving to do here and
terrific.
Very comfortable with it.
Great. Thank you. Would somebody like to move the resolution for the charge? Thank you Catherine. Seconded by Liz. Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? Okay, we can vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Seven zero. Hey, this brings us to our public forum. Welcome to members of our community and thank you for your patience. Thank you for joining us in person. I think a couple of people have signed up. Just a reminder, we ask that you please try to keep your remarks to about three minutes. And, um, please don't be disappointed that we aren't going to engage in back and forth. This is really our opportunity to listen attentively to comments and concerns shared by members of the community. We will have a brief opportunity at the end of the meeting for some board dialogue. And then we can always also revisit topics at future meetings or for future, um, follow-up by the administration as appropriate. I, I think the first person who's waiting to speak is Erica Glick, please.
Good evening. If you are not aware, it's dyslexia awareness month. Aside from the fact that dyslexia affects one in five individuals, this topic is near and dear to my heart. Dyslexia Awareness Month isn't only October for me, it's actually 12 months of the year. As you know, I have been advocating for years regarding our district's reading program or lack thereof, and I won't give up. I've been doing a lot of research, watching Board of Ed meetings in area districts and beyond. The other night I happened to watch a few Board of Ed meetings in Chappaqua. A similar district in many ways, affluent, high-performing, educated parents, children who are afforded many, many opportunities. As I watched these parents with tears in their eyes, begging and pleading with their district to consider an improved literacy program, describing years of failure, trauma, private tutoring. I thought about the similarities to many of our own struggles here in Patona, Lewisboro, and Chappaqua's refusal to do anything different. Again, it was so similar. And then I saw Ms. Ford sitting on their panel at the time as their director of literacy and their chairperson of the reading department. And now here she sits as our superintendent of curriculum instruction, listening to our stories, almost identical, and doing nothing about it. A failed reading program. Innocent students, children traumatized, made to feel stupid, made to feel lazy. Children blamed for the ineffective teaching of balanced literacy, as though trying harder would magically solve everything. Leaving the district in droves, when all the while there is a better way. But we as a district refuse to see it, let alone talk about it. Reading is the only field, yet the most important one, where it is deemed okay to have a philosophy that flies in the face of science. Would our district be okay if our social studies teachers taught that the earth was flat? Probably not. Would they be okay if our music teachers just had students listen to music and explore instruments through exposure? With the expectation that they'd be able to play an instrument proficiently? Of course not. These children are the innocent casualties of our curriculum, our outdated, disproven, antiquated, unscientific curriculum. How many curriculum casualties must we have? How many children must leave this district? How many lawsuits must we have? How many children must get up, as my daughter did last month, to bravely say to the Board of Education, enough? We deserve more. I'm here again tonight to ask for a literacy committee or at the very least a meaningful conversation. We must do better. Why aren't we? Thank you.
Thank you. And I think next is Oksana Aronoff.
Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight, um, just several of us here, but, um, with us in spirit are 173 members of the KLSD Special Education Advocacy Group. So we're here tonight on their behalf. As you know, since May, we have attended BOE meetings to share our stories, to work in good faith with the board and school administration. We recently had two meetings with the superintendent, Andrew Seleznik, including one this afternoon. Out of respect for that process, we will not divulge what has transpired so far. But we do absolutely hope that he will share and give you a status update, um, during board dialogue today. Over the past several months, we've repeatedly asked to have a collaborative dialogue with you, um, the board. However, since you have not been able to host us, we are planning to host a town hall that we will be live streaming for the community. And we absolutely hope that you will all attend and join us in conversation. We will follow open meeting laws so that you can be active participants in this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else waiting to speak who didn't sign up? And then I think we're ready to close the public forum. Thank you again for speaking with us. And this brings us to the consent agenda where I'm not aware of any items that we want to vote on separately, but I know we do want to have some discussion around at least one item. Does anybody in need or planning to vote separately on any items? If not, then would somebody like to move the consent agenda, please? Zulia, thank you. Bill, thank you for seconding. And then I'm going to pause at least to invite Andrew to say a few words about our resolution 12.03, which is an opportunity also for an update on the partnership through Westchester County to administer COVID testing for students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marjorie. I'm happy to, uh, speak to that a little bit. Um, tonight the board is being asked to approve a memorandum of agreement between the school district and Westchester County Department of Health and it's a part, partners that it's using to help school districts throughout the county administer. And it's partners that it's using to help school districts throughout the county administer weekly COVID testing. This is coming through orders up from New York State to maintain public health and safety in all of our school districts. And we're really happy that Westchester County was able to secure a grant from the federal government that allows them to provide free of any charge to the districts. Not free of complications, I should say, but free of charge, weekly testing. And assuming all goes forward tonight, we hope that by the end of the day tomorrow, we will be communicating with all of our families. It's a, it's a, at least a two-step process for families to consent for their children to be involved in the weekly testing. They would first fill out a consent form through a digital form that will be provided online that the district will maintain. Once that consent form is completed, they'll be provided a link to a lab whose name is Quadrant Biosciences. And that's one of the vendors that the county has secured for many school districts in the county. The families would then go onto that website and complete a registration form for each of their children through that website. And at that point, then their children would be ready for testing, which would happen in the schools. If all should go well, knock on wood, we would hope possibly to begin testing as early as the week of, not next week, but the following. I forget, forgive me, I'm losing the date of that week. The eighteenth. Thank you, Rory. The week of the eighteenth is when we're hoping the testing might begin. The testing is intended to capture up to twenty percent of the student population, depending on what percentage consents to the testing. So that's the optimistic outlook.
Twenty percent each, each week, each cycle?
Twenty percent each cycle. Correct. But again, depending on how many consent forms we actually have back, we will certainly encourage families to consent. But of course, it's up to each individual family to make that decision for themselves. Additionally, the same program will be administering the now required testing for any school staff who are not vaccinated. And we, in the same way that we recently put out a survey to our middle school and high school students asking for vaccination, prior to that, we had put out a similar survey to our staff. We're happy to report, we do have a very high percentage of vaccinated staff. But we won't be needing to test such a large number on a weekly basis. But staff know and entirely understand that if they haven't shown us evidence of vaccination, it's required of them that they be tested through this weekly program. And they would be tested every week, I think, if not just twenty percent, if I'm remembering correctly.
Are they every week?
It's weekly testing for anyone who's not vaccinated. So again, communication will start to come out about that tomorrow, we hope, by the end of the day. If not by tomorrow, very shortly after that. There's quite a bit of documentation. We'll have a website. There'll be translations in English and Spanish and digital forms available for families to fill out. And, and I think phone numbers available or ways for them to contact the vendors themselves if they have questions about the process. It'll, we appreciate all the thanks that went out to the principals. This, this will certainly become another task in the buildings that has to be managed. We're, we're very appreciative of the county. They're going to provide the staff that actually conducts the testing. We will still have to have some of our own staff help to manage the students and get them from class to the location, get them back again. We are told, and we've been in communication with some other schools that have begun more recently, that when you're doing the twenty percent per week, it can, it can happen fairly efficiently. There will necessarily be some brief missing of class time to be able to go down and have it done and go back. But that's the sacrifice for trying to maintain the public health that we all want to work through. So are there any questions about that that we could try to answer?
I have a couple. First off, what kind of response or do you know what kind of, like, how much response you've gotten from students about their vaccination?
I don't. Yes, Neil, do we have anything on that?
Yeah, so far with about two hundred and fifty positive responses of proof of vaccination status.
Two hundred? And out of how many? Because obviously, we can't include any of the elementary students.
No, no. So it was really sent to parents with the help of the tech department, with the help of Chris Nelson, to all sixth to twelfth grade parents. So I think we're thinking around, that's a low number, I think about, yeah.
I will say it was complicated. I, I don't, I only have a middle school and a high schooler, so I don't use Schoology. I don't go on there. So when I got the email, it, it was very, I had to just go to my kids and say, I need, I had to sit with them. And I, I just wonder if it doesn't have to be more than one step? If we can make it a little bit less complicated, if we can get a link? I thought that, that was difficult for me. I don't know if that's possible.
Certainly something I could talk to the IT department about and try to make it a little more streamlined.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Catherine, I did look up the number. So between six, six through twelve, we have sixteen, sixteen, one thousand six hundred sixty-eight students. So out of that, and then I also wanted to add to what Andrew was saying, that the test is a non-invasive, self-administered saliva test.
Saliva test, okay. I, I do know for my college students that the saliva test is, is, you gotta get used to it because you really gotta get saliva, but we'll figure it out, I'm sure. If I give consent for my students and we only get twenty percent, that means presumably my children who have said yes to will get tested every week.
I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think, I think one of the things we still have to work out is how we're going to sort out the groups that are going to get tested each week. It might be alphabetical of the twenty percent. We might do at the high school, A through H one week and then other parts of the alphabet another week. But that's still being worked out with the county.
I'm still confused because don't we have to get twenty percent of the student population?
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. I know that the goal is to get to that twenty percent. But again, it depends. I think it's tied to what percentage actually consent to having us do it.
Okay. And I'm sure we can't do this, but will you be testing elementary school students more? Because it sounds like they're, you know, nobody's vaccinated in the elementary school.
I don't, I don't think so, no. It'll be the same, similar process.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
I understand that there's two hundred some odd students out of sixteen hundred are vaccinated?
Who have responded.
Responded.
We suspect, based on some other information, we think it's probably much higher than that.
I would hope.
Much higher than that.
Do we plan to resurvey periodically?
We will. Yeah, we'll.
Well, I think with that feedback, I think we'll have to reconvene about maybe the process and make a little less friction for people to upload.
Don't we ask students to fill it out themselves or are they not, like, are they old enough that if that email had gone directly to my sixteen-year-old?
Yeah.
Can't he submit that information himself?
We did contemplate that. I think we were thinking that it might be good for parents to know that there's, that we're asking for this proof from, from their children.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wonder if that's why there's such a low percentage? Because it just, a lot of middle school and high school parents just don't go on Schoology to check their children's accounts.
Right, right.
Now, I just, I never do. I don't need to do that.
Yeah, it might be multiple tracks. It might be informing parents that we're going to send communication out to students and ask that way. So we'll, we'll have to reconvene and think about making it a little bit easier for people.
So I'm hopeful that it's a lot higher than two hundred.
I know, I think we're confident that it is, I think. But like you said, the, maybe the, the survey is getting in the way of that. So we'll, we'll certainly look into it.
Thank you, no.
No, no, my pleasure.
Can I just ask a couple of clarifying questions? The intent would be to test all school, all buildings, right? It's not just limited to middle school and high school. It would be every building, right?
All buildings.
Including staff.
Including in the district office there, if there are any unvaccinated staff, including the transportation department, if there are unvaccinated staff there, right across the district.
But if we got to the twenty percent, that would be somewhere around six hundred per week? Am I thinking about that right? Hundred and twenty a day across the district?
You're, you're, I'm not sure. Are you taking that?
Oh, sorry.
It's one time per week.
Say, a Monday, everybody gets tested. Is that the way we would organize it? We would have a day where we do the weekly test?
There'll be a day in each building, whether it's the same day in each building, we don't know. And it could be, again, depending on how many are being tested in that particular building, the vendor might be able to go to two different elementary schools on the same day and do one in the morning and one in the afternoon, something like that. So there's just, we don't know these details yet.
Yeah, yeah. And then we're asking for consent, but I, I'm just assuming that there's no sort of automatically opted in and you can opt out.
No.
We must receive consent.
Yeah, from families.
And then you mentioned right out of the gate, it's not without its complications. And to me, that sounds like we need to allocate resources to doing this. And so as we allocate resources across the buildings, are we going to leave other areas short? Or how do we intend to fill that gap? And I, I know it's complicated.
Yeah, I mean, this is, unfortunately, a little bit of life in schools is that the more tasks we're asked to do, the more we do with the staff that we have. And it's been this way for quite a long time. We talk about unfunded mandates that come from the state and we try to figure out best how to do them. We, we, again, we've, we have spoken to districts where the testing is in place. And it sounds like once it gets off the ground, it's not too burdensome. But it's going to be, it's going to feel probably a little bit inefficient to students at first. It's going to be, it's going to be an inconvenience at first. But we're going to stick with it. We think it's, obviously, the whole state feels is very important, as do we. And we're going to, it'll get smoother with time.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't agree about its importance more. Then is there an inconvenience? I, I don't, I don't like the term learning loss, but are we going to be pulling students out of classes? Or are we going to have to find ways to have a period or do it during recess? Or have we thought through yet the timing and the potential impact on academics?
Again, we, we don't, we don't have as many of the details as we'd like to have. But I, I just know how other schools are doing it. What, one thing we've been told, and we are hoping this is accurate, is that the test itself is very fast. So that the time out of class should be brief if we can orchestrate that well.
The result is not immediate.
No. It's fairly quick. I believe it's around about a day. And through the, through the software that the families register through, they'll get an auto, we'll, we'll get notification. Families will get notification automatically through that software.
Automatic quarantine and isolation and so forth, I presume.
If they're a positive test, that's necessary. For the best.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Ilana.
This, this seems like an exciting part of sort of another mitigation and tool that we now will have in the district. And I just, a couple of questions. One, I, I think a saliva test is probably new to a lot of us. So my understanding, from just looking at that memorandum of understanding, is that it is a PCR test, even though it's a saliva test. So it's sort of that gold standard of the, the most accurate test available. Will we be doing an initial screening of everybody? I know that had been talked about at the early beginning. We're going to start immediately twenty percent of students.
We're going to go straight to, this was, this was a discussion among districts. That had been the talk early on when it was hoped that it could really get started even as school was starting.
Yeah.
But at this point, the most places have decided, you know, everyone's been in school already. Doesn't, and it's, it's so burdensome to try to test everybody. We're going to go straight to the twenty percent.
And then I was just wondering if it's possible to share the vaccination rate for the staff at some point?
Yeah, I think we're, we're getting, we're getting close to that. I think we're, we're just finalizing it, particularly now around having to notify those who are not, who haven't shared with us. That's probably going to firm up the numbers more than anything else. So I think we will be able to share that soon. I, I do want to just speak to the saliva test again because of something Catherine said earlier. I, I don't, I think there are different types of saliva tests. I think there are swab types, where you may swab the inside of your cheek as well as, as well as type where you have to produce.
It's hard.
But I'm not, I think this might be the easier type. So I just don't want to scare people off.
But even, even the bringing it up too, like, we're getting really gross. But it, it is, I mean, I know my son does it three days a week in college and it, it is like thirty seconds. They figure it out quickly and he drops it in a bucket and he's on his way. Like, it's very quick.
And, and just to sort of reiterate that the intention of doing this is to make sure that we can keep schools open as much as possible and keep sort of the virus contained as much as possible and stop spread. So even though when we start, I mean, I think the other, the reality of like, when we start testing, we're going to get some positives. And that means some people are going to have to quarantine and hopefully they're not sick. But that will stop, that ultimately is a better public good in stopping the spread and knowing that. But I think all of us have experienced also just, I mean, every time you sort of get a COVID scare or a COVID quarantine, it's, it's inconvenient, it's scary. And we don't want that, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't test probably. I mean, you know, it's actually better to know than not know.
Can I just clarify one other question? When we say twenty percent of the population, we're talking about twenty percent of transportation staff, students, everybody.
No, the staff, everyone has to do it if you're unvaccinated. Twenty percent is the students.
Okay.
If they're not vaccinated.
Every unvaccinated staff member must be tested weekly.
Okay, okay. So when Rory said it's about six hundred, it's about six hundred students would be twenty percent of our population.
If everybody.
If the entire population.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to add this, I know you said it's probably the easier of the, of the swabs. But just last year in my former district, it was the, not of the easier. I was using the, you know, having the saliva come up. And we were able to do it in the elementary school a couple of times and it, it worked. And, and there were a lot of questions beforehand, but then after it was done a couple of times, everyone got used to it and it was, it was fine.
Yeah. I think I saw in the contract also that this is just till December thirty-first and then we have the opportunity to renew it again, correct?
Yeah, that's what they've, they've promised us through December and then there'll be further discussion at that point.
Are all districts on that same timeline?
I believe, I believe so, yes. All, certainly all districts that are working through the county.
Okay. That seems actually kind of good in a way, right? To, to be able to regroup and reflect on how it's gone and then.
And we'll have some data. We'll have some data, right? So we'll, we'll know what the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. This is really enormous and terrific that it's coming together. We really appreciate the update. And it does sound like the next time we meet, you know, we perhaps will have already implemented. So we really appreciate the opportunity to hear about it and for our community to be aware. Thank you. You plan to notify the community more broadly? Yeah, tomorrow. Okay, great. That's great. Thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I think we can vote on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, seven zero. And I think we should just quickly go back up to board subcommittee reports before we look ahead because we postponed them at the beginning of the meeting. I know tonight we heard from audit and I'm not sure if there's anything else. You already thanked the audit committee. And thank you to you, Julia, for chairing the audit committee. And thank you again, Danell, for those clean audits. Anything, Rory, you mentioned finance committee is going to be meeting next week. Is there anything else? We've adopted the charge.
We're excited, at least I'm excited that we now have a charge and we can move forward with getting the community involved on Tuesday. So no, we haven't, aside from coming up with the charge and thinking that through, we haven't done anything else. We'll kick it off on Tuesday.
Wonderful, thank you. Ilana, any updates from parent council?
We had a really good meeting with everybody. It's nice to see everybody on Zoom. But we just sort of discussed what had been, you know, sort of the opening of school and parent concerns around what had happened. And we talked about some of the quarantine and feedback on how that had gone at Meadow Pond. But overall, it was nice to see everybody and hear from the different schools. And I think it reflected a lot of what was said tonight also. That's great.
It's, it's always very helpful to hear questions through parent council. But they ask a lot of things that give us feedback and help us think about how things are going and if there are things that we might do differently.
Great, wonderful, thank you. And I think policy committee has met.
Policy met. There's no third reads for today. There's a, part of the consent agenda was removing a policy. It was just, it's a duplicate, it's covered somewhere else now. No other exciting news.
Great, thank you. And sustainability also has met. We met last Friday and we had the opportunity to hear an update on sustainability in our schools and some new work that I'm sure we'll be hearing about in more detail at an upcoming board meeting. We heard some updates on infrastructure and some work that has been done over the summer and some studies that have been done. We've taken advantage of some resources that were free and made available to school districts to do some benchmarking. And we just kicked off the next iteration of our Cameron Cole data collection cycle, which is our opportunity to capture information about how we're doing through the lens of energy efficiencies and the work of our energy performance contract. And we touched briefly on an upcoming meeting. I think it's next week when the New York State School Board Association will turn its attention to advocacy resolutions, two of which pertain to sustainability and opportunities for schools to develop metrics or to advocate for additional funding for measures that help our schools take initiative and mitigate climate change essentially. I think that's it from sustainability. I think that's it from sustainability. Okay, thank you. And then I think we can go back down to recognition of donation. Did I miss something?
I just had two other announcements.
Please. Oh, yes.
So hopefully, in addition to the communications going out tomorrow about the COVID testing, I'm hoping that we'll also be sending out our invitation to our first learning cafe over the year, which we are scheduled for on the evening of October 19. Those who don't know, a learning cafe is an opportunity for community members as well as staff to come together in conversation. We typically try to pick topics that are relatively complicated. We always want people to know in advance, you're not coming to listen to a lecture, you're coming to participate in a conversation and the dialogue. And as, in the spirit of the evening and all of the principal comments about in-person learning, we want this to be an in-person event. Necessarily, for the regulations, that means we have to cap the number of people who can come to this first cafe. We've been told we haven't had enormous numbers wanting to come to the cafes in the past, so if it stays relatively consistent, we should be able to welcome all who want to come, but if we have such an enthusiastic response, then we'll have to cap it so that we can maintain distancing. We hold these in the dining room at the middle school, and we'll be back there. And the topic for the first cafe was given a very nice lead-in tonight by Dr. Cecilia when he spoke about his work with the faculty, and that is really the same focus for this conversation. What are the, what have we learned through the pandemic experience about learning in schools? And what, what sorts of things do we want to think about differently as we move forward? What do we want to hold on to? What do we want to let go of? So we were very much looking forward to inviting community. So tomorrow, there'll be an email invitation with a link, with an opportunity for people to sign up, and then we'll be in touch depending on whether we exceed that cap or not.
Great. That's exciting. Thank you.
And then the only other thing is a point of clarification. This is a question I've had a few times now, so I wanted to try to clear up possibly a fault in my own writing, and it has to do with those daily COVID updates, that I've said I've had a number of people ask, what does it mean when I say that either contact tracing was necessary and it's been completed, or no contact tracing was necessary? Essentially, what that means is if it was contact tracing and it was completed, it means that in addition to the COVID positive case, there were some others, individuals in the building who were identified as close contacts, and then were needed to be contacted so that they could begin the quarantine process. And when no contact tracing occurred, that's the part where I'm, I think I might revise the language, because actually, we do sort of contact trace, and what it results in is we don't find any close contacts. So I've used the shorthand of saying there was no contact tracing really to mean there was no quarantining as a result of the, the work that we did. So that's what that means. I've had a few people ask, how could it be that there's no quarantining when there's a positive case in school? There's a number of different reasons for that.
Vaccine.
Vaccine can be a case now, fortunately. Sometimes it's the case that this person simply hasn't been in school during the period that they were infectious, and now with some of the new rules, depending on how a person gets to school, they could actually go through the school day, and if we're all wearing the masks properly, they could maintain at least the three-foot distancing, and if that's all happened, then there's also no quarantining necessary. And we've had quite a number of cases this year where there was either very, very little or no quarantining around a positive case, and that's a very significant difference from last year.
Yeah. That's where the game is right now.
Yeah.
It's a pool.
Correct. Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Okay, then we're going to move down to 16.01, where we have an opportunity to accept a generous donation from Patty Turwiliger, and this is for a snare drum kit and music stand earmarked for the John Day Middle School. Would somebody like to move the resolution to accept the gift, please? Thank you, Liz. Seconded by Ilana. Thank you. Thank you very much for this generous gift. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, 7-0. And that brings us to 17.01, which is our opportunity for some board dialogue and discussion. Not sure whether board members had any new topics or new items they wanted to bring up or any comments. If not, then I'm going to look ahead to future meetings. Thank you.